Well, I lost her somewhere.
Oh, you're a dickster.
Oh, here she is.
Okay.
Yes, you knew profession photo shoot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I changed from, I'm going to the yes for modeling.
Oh, cool.
For old timers.
Have you guys ever considered doing one of those calendars?
No.
Well, I don't think so.
The next question is with or without clothes?
Well, that's for you guys to decide. I think that's, yeah, it depends on whether you want to sell them or not. And I don't know which way to sell them.
I'll send clothes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so if, while we're waiting for people, don't hesitate to grab something to eat.
How are you today?
If you're in that state. Amy just ran to get some plates, yes. It would help, it's a good point. Don't get anything to your.
Okay.
I take it back.
Hi, Bob.
Hello, Kim.
Hi, Bob.
Hey, Bob. Does he take?
It will be now.
Was that you running today?
Did you have some?
I was.
Was it neighborhood, wasn't this gonna be?
You could have fucked with me.
Wasn't this gonna be?
I was up the hall. And then I was fucking back up the hill. And then she, she's really into things that are not normal. And she spotted, she went hard.
I saw, um.
Yeah, I mean, it was shorter. There was one day on this trip.
Yeah, I just tried to go when the sun was.
We just, we rode from there.
Late to the whole time, I think it was a lot.
Yeah, how are you?
Look at you.
She was this Monday, Sunday, and Saturday. I mean, it was this. She's a backer, yeah.
We went.
Yesterday, it's like this fall's in the morning. Come if you're more.
But then once we got to Vermont, it was so hard going.
What's the meaning?
Yeah, it just was. Yeah, there were.
Might get down to the thirties. Help me an angle.
That's probably the. All right, yeah.
And then from there, headed south in Vermont, and then from across to New Haven. And then to Reno.
I feel a bit of a riot this year. Never quite did before.
Just love to be here, she'll take care of it.
I know.
It's a snack time for Ryan Drives.
Ryan Dunnham was saying, this is really going well. He's not appropriate to take.
Well, I've had a couple.
I was a one look.
I've had a couple.
I picked one fine.
About the time it started growing, it stopped.
Get them all away.
So Vern, you expecting some of your people to be here?
Get them all away.
One at the most.
Okay.
Two of them are on vacation for us.
That's all we had to do.
They can't sell my energy.
They just said, see ya. You know, with their private. Yeah, we certainly do.
One's in Alleghen, and one's probably in Ohio.
No, I appreciate that.
He's up in the Alleghen.
That's not correct.
I know the application.
I know it isn't.
Of course.
Ronnie's on his motorcycle somewhere, probably in Ohio.
You know, he's a big guy, he's a skier. And I ran into him one time. And he was like, hey, we should follow that, you know what I mean? And gave me an idea, um, we track this. Oh, yeah.
Yep, okay.
I engaged him, and I'll be like, sixty. I was like, it's eighty. He literally goes every day.
No, no, thank you.
I was just having a bring it.
I was happy with thirty.
It's that kind of the.
It is. Well, not, I was drawn on that.
Hello.
How are you?
Hello.
Oh, well, hi.
I was just thinking about you.
I was following you, and I said, wait a minute, it says the wood, he went right by it, and it kept going, and I was like, trying to call Kelly up. And, um, anyways, I figured out this must be where it is, and that must have been you.
Okay.
So, does everyone know they have four pictures?
I don't know if that's been said yet or not.
It has been said to many of the people, not to all. So let me ask again. Kim, are you expecting work?
Uh, Amy couldn't make it tonight.
Okay, so otherwise you're covered?
Yep.
And Vern, you're.
I just don't hold up.
Neris.
Well, I'm sure she won't mind if she's not in picture.
And then you, the three of you from Bethel?
I did.
I can't find out where you were.
Oh, you did. I made it all the way to the Woodstock in that camp.
Yes.
It's traffic. Yeah, and she told me that she said some began had taken off, and it must be where she was going, and she just assumed. She never said what, I just assumed it was Woodstock.
Oh, green.
You made it. You're funny.
So clearly, the back rows are getting filled up quickly.
I see that.
I'll let the back rows stay together. I'll move.
You're moving. You're all good.
So I'll sit anywhere, I'm not afraid. Another minute, you're still waiting, okay. Is it okay to go outside? Because I know there's some nice green in the back there with the.
So unless someone, anyone opposes, I'll go to the front. So we're doing a little, we're profile, doing a little profile on Vern for our annual report for the Northern Forest Center. And so he's been busy on a photo shoot earlier this afternoon. And so while the photographer was here, we were going to ask you all to go outside, as a group, to review the picture. If that's okay. Someone opposes, you can skip that. Here comes Frank. So. Oh, no. Alice, Alice, the lower section. We'll see. What'd you hear?
Frank's on his, he'll be on his way.
Well, it's. Nine by fourteen minimum.
If we wanted to be efficient, we could start going out. We think Frank's imminent?
Let's be efficient, put over this, I'm going home tonight.
Thanks for that.
I'm ready.
Why not come back?
True story.
Need on, Mr. Old.
Help her.
Doing what?
And you're on the board, right?
Yeah, I'm not here to spoil your fun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I keep walking in front of you, I'm sorry.
No, it's tight here.
I don't think there's some drink. Pat, you want some drink?
Sure.
Take your pick, sir.
I'm good, thank you. Scott.
Patrick, Scott Cole?
I'm with First Light Fiber.
Oh, hi.
Okay, hey, how you doing? Pat McCarty's one of our selectmen of Bethel. I'm just a private citizen paying the ass. Which one?
The pink one. Why not?
Why not?
What is that anyways?
Says zero sugar, summer splash punch.
Okay.
Oh, Christ, I can't.
Take it, wait.
I don't, I don't have the, I just don't have that pull of teeth to my claws. You didn't make him put them on to there.
Thank you, sir.
Put it down wherever you want. So they.
They went to get paid, wait till I guess enough.
Okay.
Somebody did, I'm not sure.
They have gone. George, you got? You want these right? Yeah, I get. Good, Pat, here's some, I just, I have an apple.
Did the newspaper get an article in the paper about the flag disposal wise?
Yeah, but we need a promo. In fact, I was going to write something.
Yeah, they have to advertise.
You and George gotta give some credit for coming up the whole thing. People, people know about it, but now it's official now, we can say something.
Right, right.
Yeah, now I'm glad you said that, Pat, it's been. You know, kind of.
Yeah, I mean, the more the word gets out, the better it will be.
Yeah. Yeah. The barbecue was the thirteenth August.
Oh, okay.
Sunday, the thirteenth. I don't know, I always say I'm going to put more oomph into trying to generate some energy, but I don't. I just kind of. Finally, it was, we moved the flag box, got talked about. I would, finally, George said, I'll take care of this, that was great. He came through. Is there an agenda for tonight's meeting?
There was.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it.
What's the agenda for the meeting?
Uh, we sent an agenda.
Do you have it printed out?
No, I don't have it printed out. So I'm going to go ahead and get us going. Don't think we lose anyone in transit. So, again, I think everyone knows why you're here. We appreciate everyone taking some time to come around. I think this is the fourth or fifth time you all have gotten together as a group in the last couple of years, which is really, really great to see. And so tonight, we're really going to follow up on the two, two topics that have been primary points of conversation when you all have gotten together in the past. The first, first chunk of the agenda, we're going to hear from Russell Preston with the principal group about the kind of, what, the findings, analysis, recommendations that they have based on the municipal housing code review that they did in Bethel, Greenwood, and Woodstock. And so Russ has got about a half hour presentation to talk through, and then we'll just have a conversation about what you hear from that conversation and what potential next steps are. Just to be clear, this is not a, this is not a decision making moment. This is just a chance to share some, share the findings and what they found through that work. And to share some ideas with you all in terms of what next steps might be for you to take up individually or as a group, as you choose. So from there, we're gonna, we actually invited Patrick Coughlin from First Light to come. And so the second chunk of the agenda will be an update from First Light on work they've been continuing to do, following on the work we all did together a year, a year or so ago. Really to put a proposal together to Main Connectivity Authority to expand broadband infrastructure in the area. And because you all know that, that funding proposal was not successful. But since then, First Light has continued to stay engaged and is in a very active negotiation with Main Connectivity Authority about an arrangement that might, that might get that broadband built up. So those are really our two pieces, really to update you all on these two pieces of work that you've all been supportive of collectively. And I think maybe to just to, for Russ's benefit and Patrick later, if we can just do a quick, quick round of introductions, just who you are, and, you know, your position and the town that you're, you're on behalf of. And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't do that myself when I stepped up here, let the people know again. I'm Mike Wilson, CEO and Director with the Northern Forest Center. And we've been helping to coordinate, facilitate some of this collaboration among the towns, actually, in, yeah, why don't you guys go?
I'm Amy Scott, also with Northern Forest Center, and based here in Bethel.
I'm Mia Brusell, I live in Woodstock, and I'm the Vice President of Economic Development for Community Councils and Municipalities Corporation.
The Redefire was found in the straight of Nury.
Amy Berry, Mary Slipp.
Barry Ollie, Chairman, Mary Slipp. Tim Congrat, Selectman, Dillingley. Bob Waiters, Selectman, Greenwood.
Norman Illyard, Selectman, Greenwood.
James Fox, Town Manager, Greenwood. Sarah South, I'm Select Board, Bethel.
Frank Delde, Select Board, Bethel.
Patrick Cardneys, Select Board, Bethel.
Michelle Blue, Cole, Select Board, Bethel.
Frank Maxfield, Town Manager. I have, Woodstock is the southern gateway to the homestics, I must say.
I'm Patrick Coughlin, Chief Development Officer for First Light.
Scott Cole, Bethel, and I'm on the school board, actually.
Okay, well, thanks, everyone. So I think before Russ starts, just to go back a little bit, this piece of work that we're talking about here now actually comes, go back to a conversation we had with this group almost two years ago. Now, just everyone acknowledging the challenge around housing, you know, affordable quality, affordable middle income housing in the region. And a recognition that there are some limits to what towns can do to address that, but one of the levers that the towns do have are your codes and ordinances and the systems you have in place to regulate development. So we talked about this, you know, for a while. I eventually came up with the idea and realized that Russell and his firm were actually able to really do a deep dive into development patterns, housing codes, ordinances, and really look at, do kind of a cross gut check between the, what you all and a lot of people are interested in is kind of how do we support the development of more, essentially, not, not income restricted affordable housing, but essentially affordable middle income, attainably priced housing in, in this region. So that was kind of a task that was given to principal, is to kind of take a look at the codes with that goal in mind, and see what kind of recommendations they have for us. So I think with that, Russ, I will hand over to you. Afternoon, everyone. Really excited to be here with you all, and this has been a long time coming, I feel like, we've had a lot of discussions about this. You know, our office does a lot of work with codes around Maine. You know, we've worked with Scarborough, Newcastle, you know, Freeport, we used to be playing with them during COVID, and sort of have seen this across the state, even as far up as like the Todd region, working with the communities up there. And we've probably been doing this work for ten to fifteen years now, and realizing that, like, Maine is in a kind of peculiar place right now where housing is much needed, growth is starting to happen, the state is coming online to sort of support some of this. So, you know, I think you all are very timely in this work and this discussion from what we see around, around the state. A lot of folks helped us with this, you know, this is a, a sort of, you know, a convey that, that Mike and the folks put together. And we spent a lot of time both, you know, on the, on the ground here and talking to folks throughout this process. Full disclosure, I also have a camp in, in Bryant Pond, so I know the area pretty well. And was sort of thrilled to be able to kind of help this, because I see a lot of this, you know, sort of the, just talking to folks around this community. And I think it started with this vision that, that there is a regional need for housing. And what we're seeing at the state level and sort of from around the region is that there are opportunities out there that we think the four communities here that are here tonight could take advantage of. You know, some of these trends are, you know, are probably accelerating now from the twenty twenty-two data that we're looking at for the twenty twenty-three data that's kind of emerging now. But it really comes down to this sort of mismatch that, that, you know, we're seeing housing production increase in other parts of the state, and we're seeing employers around the region here say, we need more affordable, more attainable housing. And that's not necessarily being created. So there's sort of an opportunity there that we're seeing. There's also some trends that I think, you know, the Mahwesick region is well positioned for is, you know, COVID kind of accelerated this trend to work from anywhere. And I think there's this sort of outdoor recreation, this sort of being here and why this is a special place that people see and want to be. That's putting an increased pressure on the housing market. I think even within Maine, we're seeing migration, especially people getting pushed out of the Portland area and being willing to travel more for work, because they don't have to travel as much, they might be going into Portland in one or two days a week, five days. So we're seeing that, you know, the work we've been working on with Gray, we're seeing housing demand pressure from folks migrating out of Portland. And, you know, that sort of might continue in how, how that pushes out through there. And then I think a trend here is that the housing production in Maine is going towards what's easiest to create. And I think there's sort of a self fulfilling prophecy there is, the easiest thing to create right now is large lots, single family subdivisions that you can rent very easily to short stay Airbnb, or those types of things. That's what the market's going to create. I think there's a little bit of friction that we saw in creating other types of housing that could be addressed, that would encourage that sort of, you know, the market to deliver more different types of housing, they have no choice. And then some sort of larger trends is, is this seeking walkability, this idea that, you know, there are, there are several villages and, you know, towns center here that we're in right now, but that sort of idea that you could walk to services, or you could, you have a community that you don't have to choose to drive all the time, is something that nationally is a big trend. And we're seeing as people age in place, wanting to go from a large lot, single family house, they don't want to leave their community, they might want to move into something smaller or something closer to services. So there's a lot of those trends that are happening that we've seen in other parts of Maine that, which is anecdotally, I think, is happening here as well. And then the idea of multi generational living, that, you know, as, as sort of things change, you know, where you have a grandparent living nearby and can support the children, that sort of intergenerational living, COVID has kind of accelerated that, that trend, where that, we're seeing more of that happen. And then, you know, I mentioned the state, but, you know, I think there's a number of things that the state is doing with, you know, the state housing programs and, and other efforts, we'll talk a little bit more about that later, that could be taking advantage of more here in the region. Particularly the kind of rural housing development program where up to eighteen units can be created through a competitive program, but we've been seeing a lot of these projects being funded, and we're working on several over in Rumpford, actually. So there are, the state is actually trying to support this work, so I think there's an alignment there that could benefit the communities here in the Maruzell. And then there's sort of a concept here that I think I wanted to sort of underlie that kind of thread through all of the discussion. This idea that, you know, this sort of cartoon here is, you have the town center in the bottom here, and then you have this sort of rural countryside pop. And I think a lot of the choices you have around housing, it should be very intentional around where it fits in on that spectrum. So this is, you know, and downtown Bethel here is very different than the village center of Woodstock, and very different than something that might be developed on Route twenty-six. So we kind of, by, by practice, sort of try to calibrate the types of buildings that might be put in those places so they fit in. And so that, you know, they actually are additive to the community, and they reinforce the sort of historic patterns that you all, you know, cherish and are important to the, the kind of community aspect of these places. So what we do is we kind of look at these patterns. And you can see here that you sort of have, you know, several different types of buildings here that all fit in well together, depending on where you are and what, what, what village or town you might be in. But you have big buildings, you know, whether it's a very formal big building or a sort of informal big building, and then you have these sort of, you know, these structures that have grown or, 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 or components of smaller buildings, such as the big house, back house, small house, park. And what we're seeing though is that these types are actually part of the solution. So there are, there are developers that are kind of rediscovering these types of buildings and, and starting to knit them into the communities that are historic in a much more symbiotic way than you might see in other parts of the state. So what we're really doing here, I think, is trying to help you all kind of set the stage for more housing production, and kind of how can you do that? What we're seeing in other parts of the state, and this is sort of a cautionary tale, is folks have done this work already, and they're getting housing, they're not that happy with it. And I think that's a sort of underlying trend here, is, you know, the sort of market is delivering fairly big generic boxes into communities to deliver housing because it's, it's efficient, and, you know, other sort of subsidy programs might, you know, sort of force you into that, that type of housing development. Some communities are thrilled about this though, because they just need the housing so badly. But I think in places, particularly the village centers and town center here, you deserve a more sensitive housing creation. And there might be other areas where, okay, we can just, you know, kind of land, these big buildings, land on the, on the ground, don't really have any context to them, where housing might be created. And I think, you know, you saw a little bit of this here in Bethel, where, you know, you get these bigger buildings and they really fit in. And I think that was part of the analysis. was part of the analysis we were doing, is how can you lay the groundwork for housing that actually is additive to all of these places and feels like it fits in there? And we've done this work in other communities, and it has to do with, you know, partially with the code and sort of making sure that you have some regulations that steer these projects to the right form. And, you know, we're seeing that sort of business as usual is also, you know, there's these thresholds, the fourteen lot subdivision. You know, those are very sort of standard, very easy, very attainable projects for developers to do, something they're very familiar with. How do we sort of allow more attainable housing to be created in the same sort of way? So it's very easy, it's very predictable. And if you look at your business as a developer or a land developer or housing developer, it's something that's sort of, the risk is the same or the predictability is the same. And I think that's something we're trying to see is like, how can we make a more level playing field for delivering more types of housing? Because I think this is what, you know, part of the symptom we see here is that this is easy to do and creates housing that is easy to rent to folks who want to come in and vacation here, for example. But there's also this idea of how can we make more of sort of the feeling of this type of street versus the feeling on the left. And this sometimes comes down to just, you know, the width of a road that's allowed or the frontage of a building or where you put the garage in relationship to the house. And those little sort of character defining traits we can control in regulation very simply, and it results in a much more appealing experience for everyone. And I think that's sort of some of the DNA that we've kind of sort of looked at as we did this analysis, is you had a lot of great housing here already, and we just went out and measured it and said, okay, how do you actually replicate more of this? And this concept has been happening around the country, and it's really called missing middle housing. So if you think about the spectrum of choices you have for housing, where you might have a really big apartment building, you know, down in Scarborough or in Portland area, or you have a single family home on a large lot, that's really what the housing market is kind of delivering right now in New England. How do you, but there's a whole bunch of choices between them, from a, you know, four unit little apartment house or a twelve unit walk-up or a little courtyard or cottage court. There's all sorts of different types of housing that if you look at some of the historic areas of the region, you can start to see bits and pieces of that. So in our work, we've, you know, we've seen this, you know, where a lot of it is centered around a place. How do you actually create a memorable experience, experience, a postcard worthy place? And something that is for season and something that brings the community together. So we're kind of looking at all of these trends and saying, okay, if we can deliver housing that does that, it actually is, you know, people's psychology around it are in a good place and they want to sort of, you know, spend time there. And, you know, when we see that, it's always centered around a neighborhood, you know, someplace where kids can run, you know, spend time, where you might be able to walk to the corner store or the gas station and pick up a, you know, a dozen eggs. There's these sort of, you know, interrelationships between these elements. And then this particular project, this was just sort of a flexible barn that can be used for farmer's market one day or a community meeting the next night or a, you know, a Christmas concert, you know, around the holidays, you know, sort of these flexible places that don't need to be intense, but still kind of focused on creating community. And some of those we see in these historic patterns, the cottage court, this idea that many smaller buildings are organized around a place, whether it's a courtyard or a lawn or a shared green, and that you might actually get a lot of housing units in a fairly compact area that feels good, rather than sort of apartment complex that's sort of organized around a parking lot. So I think as we looked at these regulations, we're sort of, okay, how can we sort of borrow some of these lessons from other places around Maine? And we see this in other regions. You know, this is a cottage court from down near Atlanta, you know, kind of looking at it, you know, much more sort of, how do you fill in a single family lot, you know, where one house might be with five or six units on that same lot and still have it fit into the neighborhood? So where density, this idea of like more units per acre, when you start to have the right form of housing, the density conversation changes, you know, because it's sort of the character fits in together. One of the ones that we've been working on and sort of really emerged here in the discussion with you all is, you know, the front house, back house barn, this sort of, you know, this connected farmhouse, you know, where you see historically, you know, this has been studied, there's a great book on this sort of building type. When you drive around the region, maybe you probably step outside and see two or three examples of this just from, you know, up this street, on this street alone. You know, it's this type of form that might actually be, you know, sit well within the landscape of either, you know, the town center here or out on a country road. And it could be very flexible and deliver multiple units of housing, whether it's a handful of townhouses, you know, that each have their own entrance, or it's a series of apartments or a series of single family connected houses. So we've been looking at this type as a really interesting way to deliver housing in a lot of different contexts throughout this area of Maine. And, you know, then you can sort of cluster these together and build out over time. And I think that's something that's particularly challenging here is how do you put in the infrastructure so that incrementally you can deliver, you know, four or five units at a time, you know, and be able to, as they grow over a period of years, come together to be a well designed place. And you see this sort of clustering of farm buildings a lot in the landscape. So, you know, you could, you know, we tested this on a few sites, but it's really built from this model of sort of the evolving, you know, generational farm, where you have a series of outbuildings, you have a series of barns, a series of houses. And these might be better solutions for delivering housing, especially in the kind of more rural, sort of out of town situations. And so, you know, the other thing is these rural building groups, the idea that they come together as a place. So when you're driving along the landscape and you see a cluster of buildings, it can be a beautiful vista. How do we make, encourage housing to do that rather than housing that sacrifices that landscape by subdividing it, kind of degrading the natural landscape? And I think there's sort of tools that we have to do that where it would allow us to deliver housing throughout the region, both in town and out of town, and still keep the landscape as much intact as possible. So, you know, with some of those kind of trends around housing in mind, you know, part of it was really sort of, you know, as far as recommendations, there's decisions I think each community needs to make and probably include some decision making or some discussion with the citizens within each of your own towns, particularly around sort of removing discretion from the code. The idea that, you know, you could come in and build a farm, you know, connected farmhouse building, you know, by right and sort of it's pre-approved, you know, you could go right to building department. We're seeing this conversation happening in a number of communities around Maine to sort of accelerate housing production, whereas basically saying, this is the type of housing we want. If you come and you want to do this, you can go do it, rather than, okay, I got to do a planning board or I've got to sort of, how long is that going to take? I have to, there's a lot of, removing as many of those questions around how to get a building built as possible is a helpful first step. But part of that is having the communities buy in, where can that go? How does that, you know, where is that appropriate to be? And then sort of some basic ones that we saw in every, every single town was, first off, the sort of density and dimensional standards. And I think, you know, density is sort of a, you know, if you think of the code, you know, there's a few different ways codes are designed. One is like Play-Doh, you know, it sort of says, this is how much density, how much Play-Doh you can have. And you can get a house, really nice looking, or you can get a dinosaur. It doesn't tell you what you're going to get. So what we've seen is that a lot of the density conversations, like, well, let's modify the code so it creates more Legos. So like, you can kind of know that, like, you're going to get this type of building and it's going to have this type of size and it's more replicatable and more predictable. And what we find is that if you can kind of adjust the code to be more predictable and you end up getting a fairly good looking house every time, some might be more beautiful than others, just on like, you know, how you put the trim or the windows, but generally it still looks like a house. It doesn't look like a dinosaur. Then you sort of can say that density discussion is not the right way to regulate, you know, some of these decisions. And the same thing around dimensional standards. You might have the same, you know, if you picture that farmhouse cluster, out on Route twenty-six, it might make sense that it's thirty feet or forty feet off the road, but right here in town, it might only need to be ten or fifteen feet. You know, so how those dimensional standards change depending on where you are in the region is an important piece of this. And then these two other ones are related to process, I think, more than anything, you know, sort of leveling the playing field around permitting, what's really easy and predictable to do and how can we sort of level that? So the housing that you need, you know, a small apartment building type that might be, you know, calibrated for attainable housing for employee, employees from the region is just as easy to get permitted and predictable as a twelve unit subdivision, you know, out on the roads out of town. And then the other thing that's particularly interesting is the parking requirements. You know, the state has been doing some work around this, and there's a cost to parking when you develop housing that is sort of hidden, you know, and it's two units, you know, two parking spaces adds cost where, you know, if you're doing, if you're kind of creating small apartments, the folks who are living in those apartments, they might only have one car. Some of them might not even have a car. You know, there's those types of, you know, choices people are making to, we have to sort of, you know, build into the system. And I think one of the things we're seeing is a lot of folks, you know, are just removing parking from their codes entirely, saying, let's let the market figure that out. If they're delivering housing that's for a certain type of people, a certain type of product, well, we only need one car or we only need point six cars, you know, per unit. So that there's sort of this flexibility around how parking is utilized. And that's a small sort of impediment where if you're looking to sort of deliver a certain price point, having too much parking adds cost and has empty parking spaces there. So it's sort of an efficient way of using, a more efficient way of using the land as well, rather than creating more parking, let's create more housing and that sort of trade off. So then sort of drilling a little bit more deeper, you know, there's sort of these building types, sort of in general, how do you, you know, whether you're in Lock Mills, you know, looking at those handful of nice sort of single family historic houses, you know, that's a particular building type. Or we could go right out here and look down and see the connected farmhouse with the barn and all, you know. Those building types, we should recognize, say, okay, that's the type of housing that would fit in. How do we replicate that? So it could be that you're actually, you know, your individual codes are pre-approved in those or sort of nudging the development community towards doing that type of form, rather than landing, you know, a sixty-five foot deep, you know, a hundred and fifty foot long apartment building on your site. You know, that's sort of, one of the concerns we have is that, you know, that type of form, you know, might be just as easily subsidized by Maine Housing's program as a connected farmhouse. But, you know, that's one of those buildings that we've seen in other communities is not being received well as it's actively built. So I think there's sort of the advantage you all have to sort of replicate the good pieces from each of your town and village centers now or the kind of countryside that you see around the region. And then it comes down to some folks are going to probably subdivide, you know. And, you know, we've got to plow, we've got to have fire access, like there are these standards for life safety and sort of the general sort of DPW established sort of rules that oftentimes create these streets that are way too big. And the sort of, if you look at some of the characteristics of streets around here, sort of how can we design street standards that allow for all of the functional aspects of life safety and snow plowing a lot to work, but still have the dimensional quality that creates that outdoor room or sense of scale that is reinforcing the historic character? And we've seen a number of places do that, and we've been involved in a couple of them. And this goes down to sort of everything from, you know, the sort of Route twenty-six, you know, sort of rural highway to just the little lanes that you might see up here in the neighborhood. And I think that's sort of, you know, looking at how sort of streets are regulated as well as how sort of, if you sort of look at the subdivision standards that are related. So that's sort of, you know, we could go deep, more deeply into each of those ones if we want. I'm happy to do that when we kind of do some discussion. These four big points, though, are really actionable by you all in this room. And I think Greenwood in particular, we could talk a little bit about the shoreline zoning when we look at that in a second. The stuff over here is something you all have to kind of work together on. And I think that's where, you know, as a region, you're going to be stronger to sort of work within those, those sort of, you don't have full control of those things. You know, construction costs are a thing that everyone's dealing with, you know, available workforce, that's something cooperatively you might be able to work on. And then I think there's sort of, how do you, as a collection of communities, think about this more creatively around financing and sort of some of these projects just don't pencil? There's a gap between what folks can pay for rent or to buy a unit versus what it costs to deliver it. And I think we're seeing some communities be very creative around how to fill that gap. And I think that's something collectively as a region, you might want to look at. So, you know, the density question, you know, I think there's two sort of choices you'll have, is sort of, you know, how to regulate density. And part of it is that, you know, if you get the form right, there's a natural cap on density. You know, some of these houses just, you can't fit more than a few units. So it's sort of like, that's one way to go is like focus on the form. The density becomes less important because there's a sort of naturally occurring density. And then the other is sort of saying, okay, looking at your regulations, saying some of the densities are too low. You just don't deliver those types of missing middle housing. You can't do a small apartment building or you can't do a series of townhouses or a cottage court. Just because the density in the code doesn't allow that, it means. And that's sort of looking at, okay, it's really forcing that single family subdivision, you know, those are the kind of densities. Or it's going the other way. It's not sort of allowing enough density to get a project, for example, down, you know, in town here to be dense enough, you know, to sort of have a form and a predictable number of units that it makes sense and is feasible. So I think the density one is really kind of good to perform in discussion. You know, so this is just a clip of one of our other codes that I think we did up in Newcastle perhaps, you know, that where you can really deliver, this is a twelve unit apartment building, you know, just sort of a basic, what you would find in any, any, any sort of this. And it doesn't regulate density, you know, because we just knew that it would, you know, the size of that building would never really get more than twelve apartment units. So I think there's sort of some creativity around like looking at these prototypical building types that sort of naturally sort of defends you against bad density. I think that's really what all the communities are looking at, is too much density in the wrong form can be something that no one likes. And the same thing with parking, you know, we talked a little bit more about this, but, you know, looking at some of these sites that I'll show you in a minute, if you have too much parking, you just can't, you can't deliver that type of housing. You can't deliver the type of housing that you might need in this region. And then I think permitting time. You actually have some, you know, relatively good in this department, depending, you know, in a place like Freeport, you know, it might take a year or two years to get a building permitted. Where, you know, I think here, each community is a little different, but I think that's something that you all, because you have such iconic kind of buildings in the region, could have some confidence around saying, look, we can permit something like this in less than thirty days. But if you don't want to do that, you can come in and it might take a little bit longer, a few more meetings. You know, I think there's sort of an equalizer around time because that predictability, you know, the housing developers are going to go someplace that's more predictable and they can live through this. So rather coming here and then I go to, down to Wyndham, or I might go to Gray, or I might, you know, so like they're making choices based on, well, how confident am I in I can actually create housing? And then, you know, I'll show you a picture of this in a second, but you know, the shoreline zoning that comes through Lock Mills and Greenwood is sort of detrimental to a lot of that property being developed for housing and just from setbacks. And, you know, I'll take you through. So one of the ways we did this is sort of kind of role played a little bit about like what, you know, if you wanted to create housing, what sites might be developable or ready for development or, you know, could receive some housing in a way? So we sort of looked at a handful of sites and said, let's do some case studies and see, you know, if we were going to do really good housing that we see that has a lot of the principles that we've talked about, about creating community and sort of encouraging, sort of, the sort of placemaking that good housing creates, what breaks in the code? And then sort of like, what kind of housing does the code sort of direct you to do in these particular sites? So that was sort of just a way for us to really check the code, rather than just kind of go through it in a vacuum. We said, let's actually try and test these things on the ground. So in Bethel, we looked at a number of sites, but one that we thought was sort of worth discussing tonight is just up the street here. You know, and sort of this was done before the building was taken down, but, you know, sort of, how do you take a site like this that's sort of surrounded by existing neighborhood? And how do you sort of develop it in a way that would be symbiotic with that existing community? So that was sort of the question that kind of emerged from this. You know, there were sort of, you know, adjacencies and how do you subdivide it and all of that. So at the time, you know, this hadn't happened. It was being talked about, but it's sort of like, okay, well, let's assume whether it's preserved or not preserved, how do you sort of develop a site like this? And, you know, what we realized is, okay, well, if someone came in and sort of, you know, saved the building and wanted to develop a number of other units around it, there'd want to be some sort of buffer between that and the existing, you know, houses that surround it. So we sort of said, okay, let's preserve So we sort of said, okay, let's preserve as much of the sort of natural features around the site and create a series of internal sort of cottage courts, you know, where you might have a series of small, you know, two, three unit sort of townhouse type buildings, you know, that might be, you know, organized around a series of gardens and courtyards and maybe even have some small community gardens in the back here. And then all of these folks would park in sort of a centralized parking area off to one side. So you get really efficient parking. And what we're seeing in, in other parts of New England is this is actually a type of housing that a number of different types of people prefer, you know, where they can actually, you know, walk out their front door and have a nice lawn in front, you know, even though they might have to walk a hundred and fifty feet to their car to get the groceries. You know, but it creates a really unique character and sort of like fits in as a sort of little pocket neighborhood within this larger neighborhood. And then when the foe, the neighbors look in on it, you just see a lot of little cottages. It's not this big apartment building that comes, landed on the site. You know, so we sort of looked at this sort of storyboard of like, okay, this checks a lot of boxes as, as sort of, um, as a potential development type. Now, and I think it's worth saying that this type of project could be done now that even the building is gone. You know, I think there's sort of, you know, an ability to get, you know, a number of units here in a form that's not too out of place in where it is in that, in that neighborhood. In Greenwood, you know, I think there's, you know, and I noticed, you know, the last couple of days, there's a number of for sale signs on this side of, of the street now, but I, I think, you know, the sort of village center aspect of this and how do you sort of reinforce the kind of historic quality of that and sort of thinking about what's going on with the mill? We just said, okay, well, you know, the group sort of said, well, this might be a spot where some infill housing could go. But, you know, I think historically we saw, there were some historic homes, some other houses and all, like just fill in the missing piece, you know, you kind of, you see this rhythm on the street, you know, why is that rhythm not created? And what's going on there that could, could reinforce the, the pattern that's already there? And, you know, when we were doing the work, it was the middle of winter, but it's sort of this idea of, okay, well, you know, how do you sort of strengthen this as a place and kind of build on that kind of fabric that's there? And, you know, right now, it's sort of, you know, you've got the, the lock and, you know, this water course coming through. You know, so it's sort of thought, okay, well, why not reinforce next to the post office a little town green or maybe some flexible parking and then just have some infill housing, whether that could be, you know, three unit triple deckers or cottages or, you know, sort of small apartment buildings? And, you know, looking at that, it was sort of, you know, the setbacks don't matter, but you're too close to the water, you know, and sort of the idea that, you know, that shoreline was really gonna, uh, need to be reevaluated. And that's something at the state level that's possible. And we've worked with, with DPP before to, to establish, you know, sort of the flexibilities around shoreline to, to encourage development, which in a place like this, you know, kind of a village center, you can walk to the hub for, you know, eggs, you know, sort of, you've got the church, there's sort of, you know, there's a cluster of, of things there already. It might make sense for, you know, the buildings that are, you know, being built, no closer than other buildings anywhere. So the state allows some, some flexibility when you engage in those types of discussions with that. But that's sort of just one idea, okay, could you create housing there that sort of reinforces that, that existing place? And then Woodstock, you know, uh, it was sort of the idea of, okay, well, what if you're not in the village? What if you're sort of outside, green field, no development, what could happen? You know, and then, and then sort of one of the parcels we looked at, which was kind of an emblematic, you know, five acre parcel, this could be anywhere along Route twenty-six if you think about it or any of the other kind of rural parts of the region, it's sort of, okay, well, it's just, you know, it's just sort of undeveloped land, five acres is big enough, you could, you could, you can get a septic system in there, you could subdivide and kind of, you know, you could, you could do something to it. And we said, okay, well, you know, the, the travel speeds on, on Route twenty-six are not gonna change, so you're probably gonna step the development back. And I think rather than seeing this be a subdivision of single family homes, why not see it where you have, you have some preservation or you have some land set aside, you know, you have a wellhead and your septic field, and then you have a cottage court? You know, so you have a series of nicely scaled cottages around this courtyard, I mean, there's a shared kind of pavilion in the back with a fire pit and after barbecue, you know, maybe you actually have a little, you know, you know, lemonade stand in front. So it's sort of that, you know, it's emblematic of some of the patterns you see that are adjacent to the highway, but it also allows you to create, you know, a number of housing units on a parcel that might only be two or three single family home lots now you've got four cottages. And then another form, looking at the sort of, you know, big house, back house, small house, back house, that kind of, you know, that might be a more sympathetic kind of form. So looking at, you know, if you've got two of those kind of buildings, maybe it's a small kind of lean to sort of tractor barn, you know, larger, you know, bigger back barn, you know, you kind of, you could get even more units here in a form that's more emblematic of the kind of farm clusters you see in the region. Still utilizing the kind of centralized parking kind of field and, you know, the shared septic. Well, you have this kind of courtyard and this kind of communal space still adjacent to the highway and it's similar to some of these farms you see as you're traveling around the region. You know, so it doesn't check all the boxes, but it's still sort of an interesting kind of puzzle. You know, and, and it raises the question of, you know, where should you incentivize or encourage housing to go and where should it not go? Or does it should just go anywhere? And how, and, and I think that was, we tried to not make any decisions there, but just sort of say, how do you, how do you look at the code and sort of say, if this was gonna develop out of the countryside or here, here in the town center or in the village center, how do you just encourage it no matter what? So I think now as next steps, I think, you know, we encourage you all to start to think about, you know, well, how do you take this a step further? One of the things that just came up in the last week, almost two weeks is, you know, the Department of Economic Community Development has got a grant out that we're trying to pull together that allows some of those code studies to further, further be studied. And we're trying to work with some of our other municipalities. And we encourage you all to sort of say, yeah, we would, we would, if, if this got funded, we'd be happy to participate as well. But that would allow us to kind of take this a step further and really do some deep dives on other sites or do, you know, data training and kind of some code calibration, which the state will fund. So that, that opportunity kind of fell on our lap here as long as we can give this grant a word. So if one of your communities is interested, send an email to Vanessa who helped out on this from our office and she's in touch with the state right now on, on this. So it's a kind of real time opportunity. But that led us to thinking and talking to Mike and his group around this, around what are some tangible next steps? I think a number of conversations that we had leading up to this was really, do you wanna implement some of these changes? I think there are some various sort of patches that could, you know, go into the existing codes and kind of streamline some of these things that we've, we've identified. And those changes could be drafted and kind of needed in the existing ordinance and very, very straightforward. You know, so you say, we're gonna encourage housing or we're gonna, you know, edit this or add this. So that's, that's a real tangible next step and, you know, could, could be taken on by any of the communities here. I think though collectively, kind of starting to think about how does that fit into a larger regional framework, you know, would be important. It might be that housing that's needed in businesses that might be in one community might be able to be achieved and created in another community more cost effective. And how do you kind of coordinate that? So that led us to thinking, you know, some long range or mid, mid-range comprehensive planning or coordinated planning between the communities is, is essential, I think, to kind of coordinate some of these efforts, especially around the sort of, what if we create this housing and then just rent it out instead of just skiers? You know, that, there, there's a real concern around how do we use the resort economy to help maybe achieve some of these housing, you know, needs that are not being delivered by the market? So I think that's gonna take a coordinated effort that I think is really encouraging all to continue to work together and do some comprehensive planning. And then I think, you know, this is, this is really technical stuff if you don't do it every day. You know, it's not a really, it's not a sexy conversation talking about codes, so I really appreciate you all listening to me for half hour on it. But the idea that like coming together and sort of doing some fun training or fun sort of, you know, which we hope this grant will, will fund, but I think somehow kind of taking this the next steps of that, the how, you know, housing developers in the region sort of know that you are thinking about this and how, how to sort of encourage that, that dialogue further. So that was sort of some next steps that we landed on that were real tangible and I think each community could get on. So thank you. This has been really, really interesting work for us and I think it's sort of hopefully leads you all to, to take on more of an effort and kind of, you know, get some projects going. Thank you. I think we'll open for questions, discussions?
I just had a real, a simple one. I, I apologize, I wasn't able to download the attachments that we had.
Yeah.
It said identical to what you showed here.
Yeah, this is sort of a little, there's a whole bunch of dependencies that we have and it's like kind of all our raw research from, you know, cutting out of your each code. So yeah, I think this is, you're sort of that, that high level version of it. But if you have trouble, we'll, we'll try and cinch it around and it'll be accurate.
There, we opened up one of the last emails from Natalie, about the board to Woodstock board. There are three, there were three attachments. One was an I C E or something that I couldn't open. And then there were two P E Fs that seemed to be, at least the cover was the same as that.
No, they were, they were.
Yeah.
Yeah, what put in, how did you send it? Send it just?
I, I had to, I put it into the calendar invitation that the town managers circulate it around. I can send it in an email to each of the town managers just as a straight email, they should be able to forward to you.
Yeah, we could put a Dropbox link just so it's real easy to download.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was like thirty foot basis.
Yeah. Yes, please.
I have a question as far as how do you, what did you to give the contractors incentives to do these projects?
Profit motive?
The call, I, I put a call into bag because it'd be tiny home project.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I never got a call back on it. So I don't know if there was an incentive for that contract or not.
Yeah, this, this is a real puzzle because, you know, contractors are all very busy.
Exactly.
We just don't have enough contractors, you know, and I, and I think, you know, you've been dealing it within our office, you know, they'd rather, you know, go work on, the plumber would rather go do bathrooms than the big ski house than help on the sort of small apartment or formal project. You know, so they're made, the contractor community, and I think that's something at the state level that we talked about, is how do we kind of build up that? And how do we get more trades working and all? So I think part of that is engaging with them, making sure that they know this is happening and that they're aware that they should be bidding on projects here. And then something we've been talking about is that if there aren't projects, people, like there has to be projects to happen. So I think it's sort of like, how do the regulatory barriers or, or perceived barriers? Because part of it is just the optics of this too, is like, well, I don't know what that board's gonna say when I go in, so I'm not gonna tie up this property in the sixty day due diligence period. Like, like the, just the, they'd rather go someplace where they can have a much more predictable, uh...
And the problem I see with, with all that is that the ordinances or the policy could help it change ahead of time before any of these...
Yeah, there's a bit, there's a bit of a cart before the horse issue here too. And then the other part that we've been doing a lot of work on is, is trying to mod, do as much work through modular or sort of factory fabrication or shop fabrication that can be brought in and not relying on, you know, sort of the local labor market to do all of it. And that's sort of a logistical challenge, but some contractors are starting to do that more and more. You know, a shop in Scalhegan's building pieces of the project, they're gonna bring them down and install it. You know, or your KBS is making a modular that is in the same sort of style or, or character that we talked about, you know, but the local trim is being done by the carpenters here.
And they're all, they're all swamped with, with business, true?
Yeah, yeah. And I think it, it's, and this is something, I think, like how you sort of, this is not gonna happen overnight, but how do we build up more of a builder trade around here that, that can, can not just deliver the types of projects that are happening now, but can also do the ones that we're missing.
But the whole problem with doing the ordinances ahead of time is to, you'd have to have a definite decision on what type of projects you wanna do so that you could do your, your ordinances around that.
Yeah, I think what we've seen in other, other communities is, is how to provide more, more options just in general. And then the market's gonna maybe go in one or two directions, you know, and, and it's cyclical, so it might change either, you know. So I think, it's, you know, it seems cart before the horse, but I think this is part of the struggle here is, you know, as we've been talking, it's sort of, some communities might wanna just really need to pave the way and sort of make the regulatory changes. Then there's others that might say, look, we need to actually be proactive and sort of, the market's not delivering this, so we need to, we need to kind of induce some projects to happen that the market wouldn't normally happen. And, and those proactive approaches, those will also lead to the regulatory changes too. So I think there's two paths forward, you know, it's like, okay, let's lay the groundwork as much as we can to provide it to act, or let's actually sort of help choreograph and connect and sort of see if we can't get a couple of projects to go. And I think that's working with property owners, working with businesses that might need to coordinate housing, you know. So those are two strategies that might, might work in every town, but might also be particularly, you know. So I think that's a discussion to sort of have, is like, what's the right way to do it? You know, and bring in a builder proactively, say, we need you to kind of support this and this is. And those are the harder projects. Those are the projects that are not gonna happen on their own without that kind of Good question.
Bisbee lot where the school was torn down. How many lots, how many housing units could you put in there? And if part of the building's gone too, it's, there was no loss?
I, I mean, that, that, that's a question that I think has, you know, the density thing is a funny thing, it's sort of...
Did you, did you see, did you actually find anything in any of the town, town ordinances, towns ordinances that would actually look like an impediment? My, my knowledge of Bethel code is pretty loose. I think it's a, you have state laws, I think, a half acre minimum, and the only sewer around is Bethel, right in the village here. Everything else gotta have, I think gotta have half acre minimum, right, for a single family?
I don't know if the town might have it yet. I mean, the fact that you have the twenty thousand square foot septic requirement, so anywhere but Bethel, you're, you're, you have to be very creative with the septic law. And I think as a region, sort of looking regionally...
Well, I guess my question is what, I don't know, do the other towns have minimums beyond half acre? Do you know?
Yes, I believe so.
Are they acre law, is it acre? Greenwood?
Greenwood's an acre.
So you dropped, so you dropped the half acre and dropped down your...
Yes, that's part of the density is like...
That's a concrete action that could be taken.
The dimensional standards around lot size, you know, yeah. Yeah, and there are, you know, in the cottage court discussion, you know, some of these we've seen are condominiums, but some are fee simple. You know, so, you know, i- if this lot was a twenty by forty lot, fee simple, that wouldn't be a lot of it, too small, right? You know, but it had a shared septic, you know, so there could be a twenty thousand square foot lot, the condominium controls the septic on, but the actual lot that that person buys is, is way smaller than the total threshold. So that's where like every town's got a little bit different, sort of peculiar thing to look at density. But some of these houses, you know, you know, if you look at a, you know, a nice colonial, you know, three bay colonial or something like that, that could be four apartments or one single family house. So that form is really valuable where the density question, you know, you could get, you can very quickly get more density than you realize. So it's a question also of how much can the market, even the sort of attainable, you know, employee workforce needs, how much can be absorbed, you know, as, as things come online?
You, you mentioned that you had, you had things towns can do, then you had the more abstract, was you had a call on one of your sites from back and you said that other areas had had creative solutions. Do you have any specifics on what, what does that mean, creative solution? Like illustrations have been done other places?
Yeah, so...
It was like kind of workforce development and, uh, they were, they were abstract. So that, that there, that's right. There you go.
Yeah, here.
Right.
Yeah, here.
Right. What, what kinds of things have you seen other places to address those impediments?
Uh, I'm sorry, I forgot any of this, this question around the construction cost. That's kind of related to the labor and contractors and all. But, you know, uh, available workforce, you know, that's another question, but I think that goes both. We've seen this in places as diverse as, uh, Paducah, Kentucky, to the Montaukets, to downtown Providence, where sort of the idea of creating workforce housing in, in a way, you know, it's both tax stabilization could be used, you know, real estate tax to fund some of the project, it's a revolving fund that could be set up through a cooperative of corporate or, or government interest that, you know, sort of is low interest loans or gap finance.
Housing authority?
Yeah. So there's a lot of tools like that, that, not to say that, like, larger cities or larger municipalities are using, but that I think as collectively you can start to look at and say, okay, how can we do that on a smaller scale? You know, I think, you know, the T I F financing means is particularly one that a lot of other communities are looking at. But I think those are, those are more complicated projects that if you're just going to go do twelve lot subdivision, like, why are you going to do that? And that's where I think it's sort of saying, let's find a proactive couple of projects, because maybe they're not all going to happen. And say, okay, how do we put that set of tools together? And once those tools are together, and the, the private market sees them and says, oh, I know how to do that now. It, it sort of kind of opens up other opportunities.
Start with Bisbee.
Have you had any experience with community land tests?
Uh, we have, um, yes, but that's a longer discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, but that is a tool that people are using now for, for creating affordable housing.
Coming back to Matt's question about incentivizing, it seems like part of what, part of what this is all about, it's not so much incentivizing, but it's moving disincentives is, is one piece of it. But then even from an incentivized standpoint, if you do the form-based code, so you've, you've determined, if you want to build just these, if you want to build one of these connected front houses, or this style of cottage court with these, these type sized buildings in it, you can do that. Like, like, it's clear, like, if you build this, you're going to come down to the town office and fill out a, you know, I'm exaggerating a bit, but, you know, you're going to come down to town office and fill out a form and say, we're going to do that thing that was pre-approved.
No, I mean, that's what some communities are doing.
And so that makes it for a developer to, to have the understanding ahead of time that they're not going to be into a year of permitting and tying up property and paying taxes on the property, but they're going to be able to move right in. If they do the thing that has been approved, they can just do it. I think that's part, my understanding, that's kind of what's underlies this form-based code, is really simplifying the development of what you want. You just, you know, you all decide ahead of time what the community is looking for.
Yeah, and the cautionary tale there is that, so we worked with, with Freeport a couple of years during the pandemic and did a plan for their downtown, which they're very, this is sort of a sidebar, but it comes back to this. You know, they had established a very clear vision for what they wanted to do downtown through the process that we took them on. And the, the thing they didn't do though is change the regulations. So a handful of housing lawmakers had, you know, you can look up the press articles on this all, and started, like, it got their attention, so they started, and they got into design review, and the design review killed those projects. Because the discretion and kind of the, the vision that the community had crafted through this eighteen, twenty-four month period of time collectively, which was adopted by the council, was, you know, generally a very successful process. They hadn't done the regulatory work, that was sort of the next step, and then, and those housing projects that, well, it was sort of a lot, you know. You could debate whether they were good or great or not good, but the fact is they were going to do it with housing insights that were acknowledged as being great housing, and it didn't happen. And I think that's one of the things where like, how do you sort of align your regulations to make sure that those sort of, you know, you're open for business for housing, you know? And then I think it's sort of coupled with, how do we make sure we get the housing that our communities really deserve? You know, get just the sort of crap that's, because I think that's what I'm most concerned about, is that you're going to get the big housing, you're going to come in and just, you know, drop in from the air something that belongs in New Jersey and not Western Maine. You know, it's sort of that, like, it's just stamping out housing wherever you can. So I think there's a general sensitivity to that because of the, the number of projects that are, that are starting to happen. And I think that's what we saw with the state, you know, when the, the first round of, of main housing came out. You know, very quickly, you know, sort of, sort of, you know, ran out of funds. So, you know, the second round, so like, we're seeing people start to learn that, and a few of the first projects are starting to build around now. So I think over the next twelve months, you're going to see that state program maybe even more begin as, as they've learned from this, this first round of development that's actually been, been around.
Yes, Brooks Martin from Watt TV, could you please introduce yourself and what company you represent?
Russell Preston, the principal group, we're urban planning, uh, architecture as a real estate company.
Okay.
Our main office is in Boston.
Main office. And could you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Mike Wilson, I'm senior program director with the Northern Fourth Century.
Okay, and I thought this was about broadband.
It's coming up.
Now, be on that.
Next.
There's another hand that I thought I was going to do.
What is the incentive for the town to develop housing and to, I mean, it's, we already have a lot of people here, like, in the I G A. It's like so full now, like, you run into people in the aisles, the school classes are getting really big, you know, like, why, why is this such a, Barry, why do we want more people living here?
I, I, so I made it like you. Yeah.
And, and this, this project came up not so much about more people living here, but a recognition that it's increasingly, it's becoming increasingly difficult for people to live here. For a year-round population to live here with the rise of second home development, Airbnb's. So the, the question that Russell has been working on is what can the towns do to incentivize, make it easier for developers to build attainably priced middle income housing for year-round residents? To make that balance point for, so that people can actually commute year-round. Was the, that was the challenge that you thought was.
I'll just add to that too, that there's also, um, some of this comes in response to from employers having difficulty keeping employees who can't necessarily find a place to live and maybe have to leave. And a variety of other stories of hearing people who want to live here, who are living here, working here, want to work here, and are either being evicted from the homes that they're in because they're being converted to a different use, or simply not being able to find a new rental because they're, they're just not available. Um, so there's been a variety of pressures around, uh, being able to house people who live here year-round and work here and want to stay here, including young people who either want to come back here or who would like to stay but maybe aren't sure that they can because of the housing issue.
You guys develop any kind of an estimate or quantification of, like, if you do wave a wand and say, we need, you know, thirty-eight rentals to, to provide, you know, housing for the, the ski area workforce? And that surge in the winter, whatever that, whatever that part, what do they look like? Did you have, was there any, any attempt to quantify it or have some sort of?
We didn't do a, a market study, a housing market study.
That wasn't the study.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, I mean, we anecdotally asked a lot of the reporters that we spoke to throughout the process, you know, what are, what are your needs, and all of a sudden we, yeah.
I guess before you came on, a year ago, I was at a meeting, probably a little way down the library, tell us our. My recollection was there was going to be some sort of a four-town comparison of code for, for different, whether it's, you know, lot size or, or building code or what have you. Did that happen?
Yeah, I know, it's essentially.
Is there something, has something been quantified or defined that shows that those four towns laid out? And whether it's, like I said, that or a subdivision or?
So there, there, yeah, first, just one clarification, uh, Muri chose not to participate, so Muri wasn't, Muri wasn't part of it. But this whole thing was essentially based on that analysis of those codes and the appendices that came with it. They pulled out and teased out all the relevant codes for, for two towns. I do, I am watching the clock, uh, we do want to shift to the broadband conversation, so I want to kind of last round of questions for, for us while we're here. And again, we'll, we'll circulate the materials again and make sure that they're clear for, for everyone. And, and again, we're happy to kind of house and follow up and sit down with folks who are about at the end of the contract with these guys, so there's limits to what we can ask of them going forward. But we'll get all the materials to you, and again, we're happy to keep sitting down with, with the town managers and thinking about what, what you all see as, as appropriate and as best.
And I, I, like I said, I'm around, not a lot, but I'm around, so if folks want my card and invite me a cup of coffee, I'm happy.
We, we don't want to take advantage of them too much.
But I'm happy to do that as well. Yeah, any other final kind of questions or comments?
Just with the grant, um, I know it said Vanessa, but is that something the towns apply for or is that?
We're trying to put together a grant application with community, with municipalities, you know, so there's no, there's no sort of obligation to participate. We just needed some sort of municipal partners or sort of, you know, express interests. So, yeah, if, if this is funded, we would participate, and then, you know, the, the grant recipient would be the community and stuff like this. So, I think right now we've gotten enough municipalities that we can get the grant application in. And I think just because of the timing, we thought, okay, if there's any, any, any folks that are interested as well, and, you know, surely add you to the list, and it might be a letter from the town manager or community, but, you know, it doesn't obligate the town.
I think that was my understanding from Vanessa, is if, if she received letters of support kind of for the grant, that would kind of get you into the, the system to be eligible to participate. Yeah, it's a little speculative because it's, they don't know whether they'll get the grant to begin with, but there is a, a window right now.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're trying to get the grant, I think they're trying to get the application by the end of the week. So it's very, very much, like, they get, they announce the grant and give us a month to kind of get everything coordinated, so people can work in, right through vacation season, it's fast.
So is that, is that grant available directly to municipalities if they wanted to apply to the town?
I think it is being, I, I'm not sure, it needs to be municipal, a municipal entity needs to be involved.
Needs to be involved, okay, whether or not a, a town could say, I'm going to go apply.
Yeah, so this is sort of a grant program that we're using, we're, we're using it to fund the work within municipalities. And then the, the goal is to create a sort of model code, kind of a library of knowledge around code that then can be set up for a, 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 any municipal, you know, any municipality needs. So that's kind of why they're interested in doing this work, because it kind of will lower the barrier of entry for a lot of communities to do this.
Some other communities to have some on?
Uh, Newcastle, Freeport, Scottville, I don't know, the list is sort of, there is a handful.
So I'm, I'm going to suggest that we wrap that, say thank you to Russell.
Thank you, good luck with it.
And, and then Patrick and Mia both want to share a bit on broadband. If anyone wants pizza, feel free to come up and grab a slice of pizza, they will also be here. So, I don't know if everyone remembers Patrick.
I was thinking about the last time I was here.
So, so again, just to, I'll, I'll step us back just, just a bit, I think most of you, I know there's been some change on some, some of the boards, but a year ago, we were very deep into workies with all the towns to put together a proposal in the connectivity authority to build out high-speed, high-speed, uh, fiber-based internet service to this entire, the entire kind of Mahusa region that included, you know, in that case, this was more than the four towns, so this was working with Bethel, Greenwood, Muri, Woodstock, Albany, Gilead, Milton Plantation, is that it? Um, and so, again, the towns all worked very closely with First Light. First Light submitted a proposal that would have built out fiber to the, that whole seven community area. Unfortunately, that was not funded. Since then, as, as I referenced, Patrick and First Light has, they've continued to talk with the connectivity authority, which is a kind of funding source for this, for this work, um, about is, is there another pathway, another negotiation that they can do to partner, to develop essentially a partnership between First Light and the state to achieve this goal? So that's, that's essentially the context, and it felt like it was probably beyond time to get Patrick back up here and give us, give us an update.
Well, thank you for your time, thank you for your patience, by the way, I know it's, it's taken longer than we wanted on the First Light side. I need to thank Mia and Mike, they have been relentless on this opportunity, to say the least. And, um, great advocates for the towns. I'm pleased and, and I'm somewhat positive in my, um, in where we're going. But what we essentially have done, because the state of Maine, I think, M C A realizes, the amount, the bucket of money that they're receiving from the federal government or that they set aside for the state cannot solve the middle mile, or the final mile, the last mile, I should say, problem for the state of Maine. Matter of fact, all the states realize that. So one of the ideas we came up with, how do we better serve the entire community? How do we benefit both sides, M C A and First Light and you, the communities at large? Because again, some of the programs that are out there, the funding was seventy, seventy percent funded by the state, you know, thirty percent by the I S P or eighty, twenty, I mean, there were very, definite variables. But if you do the math and you think long-term, the money only goes so far. And it's ironic, the slides that this gentleman had up there about the problems, costs, construction, finding, uh, available workforce. The same issues that they're having on the construction side are, are out there on broadband. And I think it's only going to accelerate, maybe a little worse, because now you have this new B funding, that's another term out there, that the federal government's, um, providing to the states to build out. So the idea that we came up with and have, have worked out on what we call an M O U with the, the M C A was, why don't we decide, is it better if we split it fifty-fifty? So, and instead of building out just the Mahusa group, what we targeted was, First Light said, why don't we build out the remaining areas of the Oxford County telephone property at, you know, I L A C. That's the independent telco that serves all of this region. And today, First Light has built out three hundred and fifty miles of that fiber without any, um, funding. There's approximately four hundred and seventy miles left to build out, that builds out every community, not just Mahusa. We proposed that to M C A, they seem very keen on that approach. Selfishly, it saves the state money, it also benefits First Light, but we think it benefits the community at large. And the other thing, if we do this correctly, um, we think we can accelerate the timeline for getting fiber to the home options for the entire, again, community. So, that's where we stand today. I spoke with one of, Chris Vonachuk, Vonachowski this morning. He stated, Pat, we're, we're working through some things, there are some legal things they have to do because technically what we're doing is probably going to require some type of R F P, um, which is fine. And I think they're looking through, how do they do that without tripping up any state regulations or things like that, which is fine. Um, and I, I think we can get there. So next, actually, uh, next week, uh, we have a, we've just set up a call to find out, all right, if we're there, how can we move forward with the M O U document, execute on that, and see if we can get the ball rolling on finally a build-out within the territory? So I think next week.
Good.
I know we've said this before.
You might want to mention that our term sheet and pricing is.
Correct, so again, me and Mike have done a great job on your behalf advocating for, um, some special pricing for, um, you know, homeowners within the area. We, I think we started that one a year ago, we have agreed to honor that pricing for gig services. And as also to the discount plan, and it's the acronym, it's not.
Affordable connectivity.
Affordable connectivity. We're going to obviously, um, uh, apply that as well, so where people of low income that need a discount on the services, that would also be applied. So again, we feel it's a, it's a win-win across the, the table for, again, the taxpayers and the constituents out in the area. Any questions about that?
Those terms feel like an important piece, because again, I know that was part of the concern that came up in these conversations last year as if we're, because, you know, if you remember, we had also talked about municipal broadband utility and bringing in all kinds of different providers, and that's, that was a very complicated piece that we, everyone chose not to go that route. One of the concerns, uh, you know, going with the First Light is that we then have, there are limits to the competition. Go spectrum here, but there's limited competition, so that term sheet becomes, becomes really important. So that was a piece that, that you all, again, those people who are involved, have spent a fair bit of time on, on last year, and it feels, feels important that that stays in, in the mix here, given that, again, it's kind of the nature of the beast a little bit, but there are limits to how much competition there is, particularly in rural areas. So I'm just getting those terms locked down on the front end before, when we're talking about public dollars, feels like really important.
Yeah, and I have to say, I've spoken with Andy Butcher, who's the president of the Maine Connectivity Authority several times. And he has reinforced every time that the community's support for this effort is very important. In other words, what you want, they want to pay attention to it, and they think it's important. Just wanting to say again, thank you for continuing to say you are supportive.
Yeah, to Mia's point, the coalition is very important. That puts, uh, good pressure on, on the government to, to see that, you know what, you're all involved, you all want this for your community. Yes?
Hi, sorry, my name is Jenny Wheeler. I don't, and I'm, I'm from Bethel. Can you help me understand the, the importance of having broadband? I, I use internet in my work. I, I haven't had a problem using it. I've had enough connectivity. What, what will your project do for us that, that we don't already have?
So, not knowing what your service is at home, I'm assuming you may have COAX service today. What?
Just cable.
Spectrum, your cable?
I have a Starlink satellite.
Okay.
And then I have Spectrum in my office.
So I, I would, I would argue that the Starlink can work. The issue is, and someone had this today, trying to bring down a file. If you're trying to, if you're working from home, or God forbid, you know, a pandemic happens again, I, I let's hope it doesn't. But if people have to go remote with work, and you're pulling down files, like you were today, like the gentleman, you know, sent out, if you don't have the proper bandwidth, it's either not going to work or it's going to take a half hour for that file to completely download. So the applications that are, that have been, you know, coming out recently and that will continue to come out, it's going to require higher speeds of bandwidth. So that's why certain individuals, especially if you, if you wanna get the same experience you have at home as you do at work, we think it's critical. And the demand we see for the quality of service is the reason why we're, you know, we're rolling out, again, fiber to the home.
And also in our town, plus surrounding towns, many people don't have internet hardly at all.
Okay.
Very, very.
About a third, about a third of the households didn't have access to fiber or cable, they just had like a dial-up. So, so that's a big issue.
And that was the other rationale for us doing it comprehensively. We wanted to make sure, try to get as many people the proper service as they could, whether they were, you know, in an area that did have an option to get cable or, you know, a First Light service now, with the fiber, especially in remote areas, they'll have that option.
We just gotta, I, 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 maybe I missed a clarification on what, what this is gonna cost the towns now?
So the only thing will cost the town is there were, there were ARPA funds that were left over. So the, the ARPA funds that were left over, that you guys had actually pledged to the other bids that we had put in, those ARPA funds, if they're there, we'd like for those to be pledged as well as part of this opportunity. So out of pocket, other than those ARPA funds, there is no out-of-pocket for the towns.
At, at what point in the process with MCA does that become explicit?
In terms of when they'll, that's a question I, I'm gonna ask next week, because I realize some of us will have to go to town vote for those funds again. So as soon as I know the trajectory and the timeline, I, I will let everybody or let you guys know, so that you can set, properly set up your town meetings. So we recognize that needs to happen.
Because they need to commit their funds, I think it's by the end of December, correct? Isn't that the deadline?
So we, you guys need to actually have a town meeting, I'm guessing in November?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Whatever.
It better not go that long, that's all I can say.
Patrick, just a clarification for me. When you did your presentation a year ago, two years ago, time flies, so I don't remember. There was a huge discussion about ARPA funds, applying for a grant, and that the ability for individual homeowners to get fiber was dependent upon the approval of the grant. So that's gone now. You didn't get approval.
We didn't get approval on that grant.
So you're still going forward with the project. The reason why I bring that up, sorry, is because just recently, I got a postcard flyer from First Light telling me, as the homeowner, that I would be able to qualify for fiber connectivity to my home, and that you would not charge the installation cost. And when I called about that, because I get DSL, had DSL with people for a long time, I'm very tired of it.
I don't blame you.
Okay. The, the young lady that I spoke to said that there were multiple packages available, and she wasn't really, really helpful in, in clarifying that for me. So is this offer now just a realization that you guys have to go forward with this because of all of what's happened?
You are one of the lucky recipients of a fiber project we did without funding. So your area, we, we did it. So I'm gonna give you my card, because I want you, I wanna work with you on, it may have been a new customer service rep, it should be, it should be fairly easy.
Well, when I spoke with her, I specifically said that I was an existing DSL customer, and the card said, "For new residential customers only." So what I wanted to know for clarification was, since I currently have DSL, does that mean I'm no longer a new residential customer? Because I'm upgraded?
No, I'm on camera too. No, you can, you, you can.
Thanks, Brooke.
You, you absolutely can get fiber-based services. That, that was, the whole concept behind this was, we wanna try to put people like yourself, get off DSL, because you'll find the experience of fiber to be that much better. So.
I, I can't do any streaming services.
No.
Because I buffer.
Yep.
And then I get really hot-headed.
We don't want that.
Another thing that we did negotiate with First Light was no installation fee during the construction and for a year following the construction. So that's good.
Were towns you in, Karen?
Greenwood.
Okay, yep. So, yes.
So, I mean, you mentioned that you still have X number of miles to complete the project. So are we, are we still, is it address specific?
Yes, but I, we can check on, it's a real easy query, find out if your house is eligible. I'm assuming if you got the card, you're eligible.
Okay.
Can you speak to, to that point? Can you speak to the timing? Because again, this is a bigger project that you're talking about, building out, again, this area plus a number of adjacent, adjacent areas. What's your, assuming, let's say you get this done by the end of the calendar year, within the main connectivity authority, you've got the green light, what's your projection?
We'd be looking at a three-plus-year timeline, and that's, a lot of it, if it, if it's aerial on the poles, a lot, that goes very, that can go very easily. If we have to dig, we all know where we live, when, depending on the winter, it could delay, those would be the only delays is the, the snowpack and not being able to dig because of ice. But other than that, you know, we think three and a half, three, three and a half years.
Is there a, do you have a sense of where that would start and end?
I think it may start with the Mahusak group.
Makes sense.
I'm just thinking out loud.
We like to hear that.
I know.
Is there anything, essentially, is there anything more for the towns to do, you know, with the process right now? Or is it kind of a, is it a wait and see?
I think it's just a wait and see. Again, I don't, I, we, again, we appreciate your support in this. And if we need the assistance of the towns, I won't be afraid to ask, or I'll ask Mia as well, you know. But right now, I think based on the calls that I've had recently, I think, you know, we're, we're heading down the right path to, to get this thing completed. We'll have a big, another pizza party here.
You get that, we'll have a pizza party, so.
Need gluten-free options.
Did you get gluten-free?
I did. I should have.
Any questions?
I'm not gluten-free, but my town manager is.
I am, my wife is, so.
And I would encourage, you know, anybody that lives in, and we can get you the towns that have been fiber-served, you know, we'll send that back out. I would encourage you to take a look at it, and, and it's quite an experience, a much different experience than you used to.
I will take your card.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
For the update coming up. So before we all take off, I wanna give Mia a little, Mia wanna look at a time, because at the same time that, again, we've kind of stepped back some of these conversations we were having a year ago around the infrastructure expansion, Community Concepts Finance Corporation and Forest Center have worked together to raise some additional funding that's enabling Mia and Community Concepts Finance Corporation to, to initiate a broader digital equity and inclusion program for all, all of Oxford County. So Mia is deep into the process right now of essentially helping people who currently don't have the skills, don't have the money, essentially don't, aren't able to benefit from digital services for a variety of reasons, to actually provide drill, technical assistance, training, financial assistance to help people who currently, even if they, even if they live in a place where it's available, can't take advantage of, of digital services. So Mia, why don't you share a little bit of that work, because that's, that's also ongoing work in this area.
That's really interesting, Mike. So, you know, we've been talking a lot about infrastructure and broadband, but there's another aspect to all of this, and that is, once it's available, what do people do with it? And many of us, you know, that's automatic, but it isn't for everyone. And so that's really what the digital equity work is about. It's about helping communities and individuals have the technology and the capacity to fully take advantage of the internet service that's available. So the state was, has been asked, all of the states in the country are doing this, they've gotten money from an agency in the U.S. Department of Commerce to create a digital equity plan. And we developed one here in Maine, and what MCA or Maine Connectivity Authority did is they gave money to each organization, an organization that represented each county. And Community Concepts Finance Corporation got funding to help develop a digital equity plan for Oxford County. The state has then taken all sixteen plans and combined them into one sort of statewide plan that's now being reviewed and hopefully approved. And in that process, I took the lead in developing a digital equity plan for Oxford County. One of the things we don't have is a website, and that's one of the things I'm gonna put on my budget for next year. So I don't have a place where I can actually say, oh, you can go and see it, but I would be happy to send it to any of you. Although I have to say that it would take a little extra effort, because it's about thirty-six pages long, but it is in PDF format.
A little extra eight.
Yeah. But at any rate, so what I'm giving you are the components of the, what we call digital inclusion, which gets you to the goal of digital equity. And the first component is affordable, robust home internet service. And we've obviously got the whole issue of affordability versus, versus availability. What Patrick was primarily talking about was availability, but affordability was mentioned too. But one of the big programs that the federal government has come up with in the last two years, starting with the pandemic, is the Affordable Connectivity Program. And Community Concepts Finance Corporation has created these RAP cards. I have some for each town to put in their, wherever you put RAP cards, that are available for folks. This basically offers thirty dollars off your monthly internet or your cellular phone service bill, but not both, one and the other, if you're income-eligible. And what I've done here, you can see in the middle, sort of at the bottom, there's a, a chart. It shows each of the towns that are in this region, and it says eligible households, that's for the Affordable Connectivity Program, predicted subscribers. What that means is, these are people who either get SNAP benefits or they're on Medicaid or Main Care. And then the enrollment is on the last column. And you can see Woodstock is right at the predicted subscribers, and Bethel's got a little bit more away to go. And I won't say just Bethel, because as I think we all know, Bethel, the zip code, which this is all calculated by, covers more than just the town of Bethel. So at any rate, it just gives you some indication of where we are in terms of getting enrollments for this particular program. And I'm also working through the school districts to try and get the superintendents to give out more information to parents about this, for this program. We have a half-time person at Community Concepts who is, has dedicated information to help people for free sign up for this program. So we encourage everyone to please contact us for help. Another piece of the whole digital inclusion part is affordable devices. Not everybody has a computer or a tablet, and as I think many of us know, for lower-income people, many of them just have a cell phone, smartphone. They don't have a device. If they wanna go to school, for example, go get their GED, or now it's called HISC, or if they wanna go to one of the community colleges, if they wanna do telehealth, you really can't do that on the phone. You need to have at least a tablet or a laptop. So Community Concepts put in its budget funding to purchase some recycled tablets and laptops. And we've just purchased eighty MacBook Airs and sixty Samsung tablets, but we're gonna give away for free to people in Oxford County. And we got those from SAD forty-four, from the school district. And let's see, the next thing is digital literacy training. That's critical. You've got your device, but you need to know how to use it for all of the purposes that you wanna use it for. I mean, I've heard stories of people having their device sitting on the shelf and they don't use it because they don't know how to even turn it on. Sadly, there are some folks that that fits with. We've made connections with the National Digital Equity Center. It is a nonprofit organization that is based here in Maine, even though it's got national as part of its name. And they offer free in-person and online, I shouldn't say in-person, but onsite and online classes that are not pre-recorded, but actually live classes. I've taken several myself. There are over forty of these classes. They're on a variety of different topics. They're great, and we have eight now onsite partners in Oxford County, and in November of last year, we had zero. So SAD forty-four, adult education, Julian Hart's been doing a fabulous job in helping to offer some of these classes, and Kelsey Bowles at the Bethel Library is also an onsite partner as well. Quality technical support. I think many of us rely on our friends and family for technical support with our devices, because one, it's free, and they're nearby. And we also know that there isn't anyone who really does that kind of work in this area as a business, that you can go down the street. So that can be hit or miss, and we have hired a full-time digital navigator, her name is Ashley Lawrence, and she offers technical support for people for free. So I encourage you, all our information is on this RAP card, so I hope people will take advantage of it, and you know, she's got a number of people that she's been working with more recently. And lastly is internet safety. I think one of the things that came as a real, it was a surprise for me, it is a huge issue for everybody, scams, hacks, whatever. So we're developing a internet safety sheet that will go with all the devices that we give out, and we're also encouraging people to take any of the NDEC internet safety classes. There are about four or five of them. I've actually taken the internet safety class, I'm gonna be taking the scams and fraud class. And again, these are all free, go online, take them. And then Ashley is gonna be putting together a internet safety class that people can take as well. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, but we've got a lot of work that we're doing, and we've got potentially another year of funding to do even more. And if there's particular needs in the community. And if there's particular needs in the community that you feel what I just told you aren't addressing, I'd love to hear about them. So please, please share the work now. And I just want to say thank you to the Oregon Forest Center, and Mike in particular, because they were a huge partner with us on this whole project. So I have...
So for people to connect with Ashley, is this, is this RAP card the best place to?
Her, her information is right here.
Yeah, if you know anyone, you know, if you know people who are struggling, or having a hard time figuring out how, whether it's business or individuals, if I understand correctly, who are just really struggling and kind of figuring online services and things like that, like Ashley is, is there a full-time employee to provide that direct hands-on support?
Any questions from anyone? I know you all are probably starving, and you're tired. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, bro. Yeah, I just, I'll, I'll wrap. Just say thanks everyone for coming this evening. Again, we'll, we'll send out the housing stuff again in the morning. And again, if folks have questions about next steps, we're happy to field that as best we can. And I'm thinking sometime in the next few weeks, next month or so, we'll get the town managers again, together again, just as, as a small group, to talk a little bit more about where our center path would be, particularly on some of the housing pieces. And again, I think the degree to which you all can talk about some of this yourselves, so that you can connect with managers and see what, what kind of opportunity there is to, to continue supporting this, that would be great. There's a whole unopened pizza over here, so I take, take food. I will eat half of one of these on my drive home tonight if my mom takes it, so. Otherwise, thanks everyone, and we'll see you also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see it too long. I'm a little icky, sorry.
So, yeah, and actually, I need to wear this.
I was saying, your fault is my...
So, that's different.
It's that time.
Yeah, that's the time.
You're looking good.
Looking no worse for wear.
Yeah, but it doesn't die.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
If you could ask if we could add this mission to the plan, and then if there's any episode.
Oh, it's raining.
Like, I appreciate you being a correspondent, Kelly.
We did it with Mia, it was before, and she's getting on the westward.